The balance in the CREAC relief fund by $3 million in fiscal, in the budget. The committee continues, obviously, to support the important relief provided to residents and nonprofits through the CREAC relief program, especially now. But here's the situation there. DOE told the committee that it will spend only 2.8 million on relief and administration of the CREAC relief program in 2021, leaving a substantial balance of about $3.7 million. We pressed DOE very, very hard to say, are you really making accurate estimates? Especially since we're in the period of a public health emergency, might there not be increased need? They assured us that they have taken their worst-case scenario and that all they need is 2.8 million. Now, that would have left this 3.7 million in the fund. And we have decided that rather than let it sit there, that it would be better to devote it to things that we are in need of. And in addition, I must say that the mayor had plans to sweep that money, but we got there first. So that's what we did. Now, leaving that money there at risk of being swept or unused, obviously, we couldn't use it for other items that were reduced or cut as part of the mayor's budget proposal. And so we're taking a portion of it. We're not taking all of it. We're still leaving an additional cushion of $700,000 in the fund, should there be, despite DOE's assurance that the 2.8 million is adequate, so that there's a little bit of a cushion there. There's $100,000 to fund a study on the district's withdrawal from the PJM capacity market. Now, as I mentioned in my committee report, this may seem a little, you know, esoteric, but it's not. FERC, the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission, made a recent decision saying that those sources of energy that subsidize renewable energy sources, such as solar and wind, have to bid into the PJM market, a capacity market, on a basis that makes them less competitive. And this could have a very, very serious effect on our renewable energy programs and a very, very serious effect on our residents. Now, one recourse that we do have, and others in the PJM, particularly Maryland, are thinking about this too, is to withdraw from the PJM. That itself carries costs because that's the, that's the market where the retailers and the generators go and they develop what the plan is going forward and the amounts and the costs, et cetera. And the PJM also monitors for market manipulation and enforces penalties against bad actors. So it's not, you know, a kind of simple thing to withdraw. But on the other hand, it may carry other kinds of costs that we don't want to bear. So this $100,000 is to fund a study to see what the effect of the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission's decision is on us and then to see what the consequences would be if we were to withdraw from PJM. Next, there's $132,000 in recurring funds and one FTE for the Office of Urban Agriculture to fund the Urban Farming Land Lease Amendment Act of 2019. And that funding would go to soil testing, grant management, and grants for urban farmers for infrastructure and operating support. Transfers to other committees. We work with other committees, as we all do, and we recommended additional funds for certain programs, the highlights being in the Committee of Education, as I noted at the outset, funds to reverse cuts in breakfast subsidies and other nutrition programs. Again, thank you so much, Councilmember Brasso. In the Committee of Government Operations, $200,000 in recurring funds to the Office of Human Rights to issue a contract for testers to identify discrimination in housing based upon source of income. It is illegal in the District of Columbia to discriminate against a potential tenant because he or she would pay all a part of their rent from a housing voucher or other government subsidy. Unfortunately, there are a number of landlords who still engage in that kind of discrimination. Some are so overtly ignorant of the law, they even advertise that they won't accept vouchers. Those people are easy to catch, and the Attorney General has pursued that. But others are more subversive. And so the testers are needed to identify and take proactive action against landlords who are violating the law. And thank you, Councilmember Todd. In the Committee on Health, $75,000 in one-time funds to DC Health to conduct targeted outreach to WIC-eligible families not enrolled in WIC. This is the Women, Infants, and Children Funds. We have, we've been able to appreciate the fact that we have many, many people who would qualify for WIC funds who are not getting them. And so what we need is more affirmative outreach to reach these folks and get them the money that they should have, that's really important. And thanks, Councilmember Gray, for that. We've accepted transfers from other committees as well. And from the Committee on Judiciary and Public Safety, $100,000 in recurring funds to fund the Transportation Benefits Equity Amendment Act of 2020. As you know, when we passed this earlier this year, it will support efforts to, where companies or even our government provide subsidies for cars, to also provide similar opportunities for bikers and pedestrians, or to stop providing that subsidy, or to develop a transportation management plan to better allocate, you know, the approach that we take to how people get to work and travel around. $93,000 in recurring funds to fund an investigator at DOE to implement the Ivory and Horn Trafficking Prohibition Act of 2020. The other cost to this legislation, $50,000, is for testing. It's included in the budget of the Department of Forensic Sciences in the Committee on Judiciary and Public Safety. Thank you again, Councilmember Allen. From the Committee on Business and Economic Development, there would be a subtitle that would allow bids to enter into agreements with district government agencies other than DDOT to improve public space, including sidewalks, streets, parks, plazas, signage, and public art. These arrangements that bids have been able to make with the Department of Transportation have proven very, very valuable. And this would simply permit these kind of arrangements to be made with agencies other than DDOT for these purposes. In the Budget Support Act, the committee report has 10 additional subtitles. And through what I've already discussed, these subtitles have already been, in effect, discussed. And that's because they're directly related to funding in the agencies under the committee's jurisdiction. I'd like to highlight one of the subtitles recommended to the committee as a whole. The committee is moving a subtitle that would require DDOT to report information on the Automated Traffic Enforcement Program to the public semiannually. Specifically, it would require that DDOT identify the top ATE camera locations by value of tickets, provide a breakdown of the jurisdictions where those receiving the ATE citations have their vehicle registered, and include a list of locations where new cameras have been added in the last six months, and the reasons those locations were chosen, and more broadly, information about the ATE citations issued. There's a lot of skepticism among our residents about the ATE cameras, whether they're just put in places to generate tickets, whether the decision is really made on public safety or is it made on revenue generation. And this kind of reporting, I think, would go a long way to explain how this money is coming in, from whom, and for, at what locations. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Councilmember Che. Let me start by recognizing other members, if any members want to be recognized. And... Does anybody, is anybody raising their hand to be recognized? Then let me, I'm going to ask a couple of questions. Councilmember Che, I know you talked about this for a moment, but I'm going to press you on this. You'll remember a few years ago, like maybe two, we started our meeting, legislative meeting, to discuss the budget, and a group of ministers came in and...
Remember.
Yes. And we couldn't find enough money to help subsidize CREAC relief. But you are reducing the amount of money in a fund. How can we be sure that we're comfortable with that?
Well, you know, as I said, we did press DOE to make sure that, that this was a decision based not only on ordinary times, but even a decision based on these times, because obviously it's incredibly important now. The money that DOE said it needed was only 2.8 million, both for relief and the administration of the program. And there were funds left over at the end of 2020, almost 6 million. And total funds that were available for '21 would be 6.5 million, just about. And with the projected spending of 2.8, you know, a little bit plus, it did leave this balance. And as I said, letting that money sit there is not wise under any circumstances. And the actual payout of money to our nonprofits, you know, which included the churches, the people who were most involved in that situation that we had. And I think it went well when we adjourned to your conference room and discussed it. It looks as though the, the money that we have now, particularly with the, with DC Water having its own programs, that it's adequate for the relief that, that people need. So that's, that's where we are.
So how much money will be in the fund next year, budgeted as well as left over or carry forward?
There'll be 2.8 million, but, and that's for the program for next year. But there, we're also, there'll also be $700,000 beyond that, just as a kind of a cushion.
So of the money that you are reducing, you're leaving 700,000?
That's correct.
The other question I have is, there were two subtitles that I wondered what the budget nexus was, the performance parking zone modernization and the public space maintenance expansion.
Well, right now, the, the mayor is limited, the executive is limited, in their use of the parking performance program. This would enable larger fees to be charged and expand parking performance enforcement to areas other than where they are now. So it would be a way, it would definitely generate income. It hasn't been scored because, of course, once the authority is given, it would have to be applied to somebody or some area to generate that income.
Let me again ask if members have questions. Councilmember Reverend White.
Thank you, Chairman. I apologize, I was being a little harassed by little people when you asked the first time. Councilmember Che, thank you for your budget presentation and for your work. I did want to follow up, and Chairman, you touched on the one concern that I had, which is the CREAC fees. Councilmember Che, have you been satisfied with the outreach on the CREAC program? Because I'm worried that there are more than enough folks who need it who just may not be aware.
You know, Councilmember White, that's a good question, and it's always somewhat problematic. We have done our best to make people aware of it, and so has, I think, DC Water. But what tends to happen is, somebody will get a high bill, and they'll say, why do I have such a high bill? And then they'll find out that there's this CREAC fee. One of the things that all of the kind of agitation, I guess we call it, that led to is that DC Water started charging differently. Instead of charging, you'll remember this, for the impervious surface that you have, so that a building that occupied all of its land and didn't have any other additional impervious surfaces, even though it might have been 20 stories, was being charged the same thing as somebody who had, you know, other impervious surfaces over larger pieces of land, and churches were primarily affected by that. So what DC Water did was, it has changed the way it applies this. It applies it in part based upon volumetric sewer and water usage, so that the big building with all that usage is going to pay a lot more, or a fair share, I'll put it that way, than, let's say, a church with a little building, you know, and a parking lot and that sort of thing. So that has taken some of the edge off of it. But what gets people aware is when they see a bill that they think is high and they want to know why. And that's typically, that's typically how this has been quote-unquote advertised.
I really appreciate that, and yet you are right. I now do remember that DC Water changed the way it bills. One thing that we just may want to monitor is, I have to imagine a lot of individuals are going to have significantly higher water usage, which is now part of the calculation because we're working from home. And so we'll just, I think, have to kind of be aware if we start to see an onslaught of residents, maybe not so much churches and cemeteries, but residents who may start to struggle because of, you know, the fix that DC Water made. So I appreciate that. Thank you, Councilmember Che. Thank you, Chairman.
No, no, that's fair enough, and we will, we will watch it.
I want to note that I believe DC Water acted to restructure how it charged the fee after our budget office did a report with an analysis and several recommendations. It included working in a volumetric aspect to the charge. Councilmember Pinto.
Hi, Councilmember Che. Thank you so much. Just a question about one of our more glamorous topics of rodent infestation. And forgive me if you mention this, but was there any increase in funding with DPW in coordination with the trash receptacles that have been continually gnawed through, but also to coordinate, to make sure that we're communicating among our agencies to follow through on other trash being left out that's leading to an exacerbation of this rodent problem?
Well, you know, when you say working, and hello and welcome, when you say working with other agencies, that's really important. There are other agencies, for example, DCRA checking buildings and operations and that sort of thing, and the Department of Health doing rodent abatement. I haven't, I hadn't focused on this in a particular way in terms of what DPW is doing and the budget, do they need more money for such a thing? Nor did it come out in any of the hearings that that was a, that was a gap. So whatever we've been doing is probably what we're going to do. It's not, it's actually not a line item in the budget. So it's not something that I could see, oh, rat abatement, how come it's down this year or up this year or whatever? So I don't get to see that as such, nor was it brought to my attention from the agency itself that they needed more for that particular matter.
Interesting. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Last call. Thank you, Councilmember Che. We'll move on to the Committee on Health. Councilmember Gray.
Unmuted, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, we can all hear you.
Oh, good. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I, I'm excited today to give my report, and we've been here for a long day. And that's, that's okay. That's the nature of what we do. Let me make sure I got myself on the screen here. All right. Tomorrow will be a very interesting day, I think, anyway. We are having a hearing tomorrow, Mr. Chairman. We have lots of witnesses who've signed up. It'll be on the, to follow the lead of Councilmember Silverman, it'll be on the building of two new hospitals in the District of Columbia. Councilmember McDuffie will be joining me for a joint hearing. That will, that portion of it will focus on the new hospital to be built for, by Howard University, which is now being run by Adventist, the Adventist system. And then our new healthcare system, which I am extremely excited about for the east end of the city. We are looking to build, I think most people know by now, if you listened to me the last 450 times that I may have said it. We're looking to build a new hospital on the campus of St. Elizabeth's in Ward Eight that will serve both Ward Seven and Ward Eight. What that hospital will do is to serve as a catalyst for, for a real healthcare system. The first time in the history of this city that there's ever been a healthcare system serving the east end of the city, where we have roughly 160, 65,000, 160,000 to 65,000 people who live. And other than the United Medical Center, which is in a building that's been there for a very long time, and we hope to be able to replace, we, we will be serving people so many, who will have for the first time a healthcare system that they will live within the midst of. It will be the catalyst for a really interconnected healthcare system that we've been working to be able to create. Councilmember Che, you've been in for a while, so you know how long we've been working to work to get this done, and I appreciate all your help to help us get to this point. The healthcare system that's envisioned will include emergency care, of course, urgent care, which the, the two urgent care centers, one of which will be built in Ward Seven, one in Ward Eight, that will be paid for by the GW Hospital Group that we're, you know, hopeful will be available to run the hospital for us. We also have a third urgent care center that will be built in Ward Seven that's being done completely privately by MBI. Included in the other services will be specialty care, ambulatory care, primary care, as well as medical offices and dental offices, which will be an absolute first for the District of Columbia. It will be available to access by anybody, actually, but principally people who live in Ward Seven and Ward Eight. It also will bring trauma care services to the area, that area of the city. It will bring back obstetrical care, which actually, Mr. Chairman, you will recall, the obstetrical care services were eliminated from the United Medical Center the year I came back, when I came back in 2017. Those services were eliminated and will have now been restored and will be restored as a result of the new hospital that we are intending to build there. We also have joining us, we have a number of people joining us for tomorrow's hearing. But my staff and I, along with the Hospital Association CEO and her staff, we went out to see the Martin Luther King Junior Hospital, which is in Los Angeles. And what a phenomenal experience that was to see what a community hospital really looks like when it's done. Elaine Batchelor, who is the CEO, who's actually from around here, will be, will be on Zoom tomorrow to testify on the experience they've had there and why, you know, what her own views are on what we should be doing to bring a real healthcare system to, you know, the east end of the city. So again, tomorrow, we'll be there from nine until nine in the morning, until 6:00 PM, brought to you by Zoom, which we are sharing today, of course. And we look forward to having a good discussion, robust testimony, not only on the new hospital for the east end of the city, but also the new Howard University Hospital, which, again, I want to thank Councilmember McDuffie for his willingness to join me in doing a joint hearing tomorrow. So I'm not going to preempt everybody's testimony by citing all of these things today. But we look forward to it, and we look forward to following up on the kinds of things that Councilmember Silverman talked about, and that is creating the kinds of jobs, working with her, that we'll do, of course, that we will create and bring those jobs to the people of the District of Columbia, who should be having those jobs available to them, veritable without exception, in the District of Columbia. Let me move on to a couple of other areas. The committee, and just following the slides that are before, folks. We are reestablishing the Medicaid Reserve as, as we call a paper agency of the Department of Healthcare Finance. Seventeen and a half million dollars of that, $58 million will be one-time local funds, and there'll be an additional $40.9 million, which will be federal funds, federal Medicaid funds that will be available. One, we have, we've had a fund like this in the past. This will be a resurrection of that, for want of a better way of putting it. It will allow us, frankly, to be able to create more oversight of those funds. But in principle part, what it will do is, it will create a, a fund that will be available because we know lots of people are probably, are going to be out of jobs as a result of the pandemic that we've experienced. And this will make available the dollars that we will need for them to be able to be served if they are out of work and don't have access to healthcare services and insurance in the District of Columbia. Many of you know that we have the Health Link as a part of our oversight as well. And I've been working with Mila Kaufman, who I think has done a terrific job with the Health Link, to work on how we, again, make sure that the, these insurers, these, these entities that provide insurance in the District of Columbia are making available services, making access to services available to people. And of course, we'll be creating those in substantial part on the east end of the city in particular. So for those who will need access to insurance, our Medicaid program will be available. We will be able to have that available as a result of the agency, the paper agency that we are establishing or reestablishing. Some of you may wonder, how, why did we set that up in the first place? It was because at one point, and we're way past that now, but at one point, the District of Columbia had so many disallowances in our Medicaid program that we had to set up a fund to have available to be able to pay the disallowances. Frankly, under the leadership of Wayne Turnage, who I was delighted to be able to have him come to the District of Columbia from Virginia, where he'd had a storied career. He is still our healthcare finance director. I personally think he is the finest healthcare director in the nation. And I think you look at the results that he's produced over the last, you know, nine, 10 years, he has done a phenomenal job, and I don't think we'll be needing the fund to be able to cover disallowances in the future. So the, the, the paper agency, for want of a better way of putting it, will actually put us in a position to be able to have dollars available in the event that the economy doesn't revive itself as quickly as we hope it does. In addition to that, this will put us in a position as well to be able to cover additional services that are provided through the Alliance, the Alliance reforms that we've been engaging in, and also telehealth. We now have a telehealth experience through our healthcare finance. We now have a telehealth experience through our healthcare finance department, as well as what we're looking towards as a Medicaid buy-in program, which we think will be especially beneficial to people who may have disabilities that don't necess, that don't put them in a situation where the economics of it will forestall, forestall them from being able to have those services available to them. And we also may be able to do something we talked about, and that is open telehealth to audio health, which is yet another approach that will make us even more forward-thinking in terms of how we, how we move ourselves forward in the District of Columbia. I'm going to refer back to something that Councilmember Grasso talked about earlier. He and I worked very closely together soon after I got back on school-based mental health. And we're not excited about the fact that, you know, we, because of this pandemic, we've had to lose dollars that would otherwise be available to us because as we all know, we lost seven hundred and twenty-two point one million dollars, I think it is, that otherwise would be available to us for lots of services across the city, but in substantial part to our healthcare services, especially our school-based mental health services. So while we don't have all the money we'd like to have, we've been able to find five hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars that will be restored to the school-based mental health program in DBH. And we are hopeful that we'll be able to make a sufficient case to you, Mr. Chairman, that will allow us to restore even more of our school-based mental health program that now is going quite well. We've brought, been able to bring together the charter schools with the D C Public Schools. And that program is now working extremely well. Some will recall that we actually stopped the, the intent to implement a plan. The first year I was back, Councilmember Grasso and I joined together in stopping what a so-called plan was supposed to be. We took a year, we did it right, and we now have a very effective school-based mental health program. So this will help us restore some of those dollars that otherwise we would have, we would have lost. We've got also, as you can see on the screen, four hundred and one thousand dollars for the electronic. Let me pull that up myself, okay? The Electronic Medical Order Scope of Treatment Registry Act, which is a mouthful, of course, but it will allow us to be able to fully implement a bill that Councilmember Che and Councilmember Brandon Todd brought to the committee. And we were excited to work with them to be able to move forward. The bill is fully marked up and is ready for full implementation at this stage. Also, three hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars that will go to D O H for the Certificate of Need Fee Reduction Act. The fees are astronomical for the certificate of need process. And those who don't know what certificate of need process is, I'd be happy to discuss it further if you wish. It's a process that basically establishes that there is a need for something to be done and allows then, with a fee associated with it, under the certificate of need process in the city, to be able to then be go, to, to apply for a certificate of need and then go forward. Let me give you an example of what we're trying to do here with, with the, the bill that has been introduced and now is fully law in the city. It would allow us to substantially reduce this three percent of the construction costs that are charged to someone applying for a certificate of need. A good illustration is the Unity Health Center located in Ward Seven on Binning Road wanted to move to another place. They wanted to move not even a mile from where they were previously. And so doing, they're, they're moving into the some building so others might eat, which is run by, by Unity Health, Unity Healthcare. They were moving to, wanted to move to the some building. And when they got the tab back, they were told they were going to have to pay something in the neighborhood of three hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars in order to be able to get a certificate of need. That was ridiculous. And so what we moved in that instance to, to do was to eliminate the fee that they would have to pay. It was reduced down to five thousand dollars. And what this Reduction Act does is to help us get to another place. The certificate of need process is ripe for, for reform. This legislation gets us moving in that right direction. And we're looking forward to be able to make healthcare then far more affordable to people than it otherwise might be. We also are proposing a hundred and thirteen thousand dollars of one-time funds to the Department of Health to continue a program that's been very effective. It is one that brings mentors, teen mentors into a program in which they're able to reach out to others of their age to help prevent teen pregnancy. We've had them down here the last couple of years testifying. And what a, what a great group of young people they are. The level of enthusiasm, the level of expertise that they bring is absolutely extraordinary. And they have a great coordinator who works with them every day as well. The next bill is a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Our next commitment is a hundred and fifty thousand dollars that would go to D O H to help support the Leverage Our Future Act. Councilmember Nadell was the person who brought this to us. And I appreciate it. It's a, it's a visit, a visitation program that is embedded now in our Under Three program, which, you know, we've never gotten it fully funded, but this has been a big help to be able to get it done. And I want to thank Councilmember Nadell for her work in getting us to where we are today. Hundred and five thousand dollars that would be devoted to the Certified Professional Midwifey Act, which is now fully law in the city. And this will allow midwifery to be an important part of our arsenal for bringing babies along to be a part of our citizenry here in the District of Columbia. Also, we've had a program in the city that we've run. Some of you, Councilmember Che, you may have contributed to it along with others. I know I have. And that is the Produce RX program. They want, they want to, they're interested in, and we agree with them, to move this program over to Department of Healthcare Finance, which will allow them to be better positioned to generate Medicaid dollars, which is something that we know will support the future of their health in the District of Columbia. So that is largely it, other than we've got, we got some money, one point seven four million dollars that other committees have worked with us on to be able to get to this, this point. One of which is Councilmember Che from your committee. We got money to be able to invest in the continued development of our, the, the animal shelter program. Five hundred thousand dollars from your committee, which will be a, a nice addition to our ability. Like you, I'm an animal lover as well. I even got endorsed by the animal lovers this year. So I'm, I'm delighted to be able to have you participating with us. In addition to those dollars, we are also, well, moving the, the program, the cannabis program. We're moving that over to, to DC, to DC, the Heart, the Healthcare Finance Department as well. And it will be managed out of there. We also have worked with Councilmember McDuffie, and we've agreed on, there's a need for Skyland, which is going to be the home of a new development in Ward Seven. There'll be a brand-new full-service grocery store, five hundred and seventy new units of housing, a new Starbucks. We drive-through Starbucks will be located there. And they are in need of, they are in need of additional, additional funds to be able to address deed and recordation fees to get this project finished. We haven't been able to identify all the dollars, but we've come up with just about half, four hundred and twenty thousand dollars that will be available to this budget. We also are working, we recognize the potential challenges that folks are facing as the pandemic hopefully winds down in the foreseeable future. And we know that folks will need the E R A program, the Emergency Rental Assistance Program available to them for support. In addition to that, I want to thank, I think it's Councilmember, I don't know who I think I know, Councilmember Grasso, who's transferred dollars over to us for the WIC program. And if I'm, if I mess that up, I'm doing, I'm doing some of this from memory, so forgive me, okay? Anyway, the, the WIC Women, Infants and Children Outreach Program. In addition, and I want to thank you, Councilmember Blons, for adding to our effort to make sure we will have the capacity once we get our commission up and running, which will be in a matter of weeks. I talked to the chairman about that just a couple, a couple, well, week or so ago. Once we get that up and running, we want to have a full report at the end of it as we continue to expand on the work that this council has already done around outreach, around police outreach. So I think, Mr. Chairman, there you have it. And I'll be happy to answer any questions that you and others may have, or try anyway.
Thank you, Councilmember Gray. I think I have a couple of questions. One is with regard to the marijuana, medical marijuana subtitle. I don't think your committee's recommendation is in complete agreement with the business and economic development. Do you know the differences?
I don't, Mr. Chairman. Maybe Councilmember McDuffie can address that. We believe that this will make cannabis, which is increasingly popular in the District of Columbia, even more accessible to people who have these opportunities available to them.
Councilmember McDuffie, to put you on the spot, do you have any comments? I was asking Councilmember McDuffie. Oh, well then, let me ask another question, and that is, you add some money for school-based mental health, if I understand correctly?
Yeah, that was.
The goal, I think, was to try to expand mental health, school-based mental health to Suitski Schools. How close were you able to get to that goal and what's left?
Well, we probably will need, and I'll ask Councilmember Grasso to chime in with me because he follows this stuff closely like I do as well. But we're not fully there. This gets us close, and close, of course, only counts in horseshoes, but it, it gets us closer. And it would be good, Mr. Chairman, if we could work with you to see what we might be able to do before we finish finalizing the budget next week. You want to add to that, Councilmember Grasso?
I'll just note, Mr. Chairman, that as I noted in my discussion, which seems like days ago, but it's just hours ago, that there are both the money that I was able to move from the M P D contract being, going back to D C P S, will contribute to that, as well as federal dollars that are going to contribute to this work. But my, you know, my hope is that there's some money at O C that will also be applied to this work. And so we are cobbling together around twenty million total. And that's going to take us up to the sixty schools that you were talking about. Now, I definitely am, you know, if someone should correct me if I didn't get this exactly right, and I've asked my staff to, to fill me in, and I can tell you more in a minute.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Grasso. And thank you for working with me on this project from the time I came back.
So David, don't, don't mute yourself yet. You said money from the school security and federal money?
That, this is all going towards mental health services for our students. And so it's not exactly going into the D B H school-based mental health approach. We do have money that I know is cobbled together there, but we're giving money directly to the schools for this kind of work, which should actually support the work that is going on in the schools. Now, let me make one small note on this, if you don't mind. The reality is that the mayor's cut to D B H overall has the potential to have a profound impact on this work. These are the C B Os that do community services have been cut by, I think it's twenty-one million dollars. And they are now going to be scrambling to continue their operations based on this cut. And right now, all we have to find is about nine, nine point five million dollars to back them up. And that will lock in our supports for the schools. But my staff is getting back to me right now with the exact numbers on school-based mental health. I just needed to get their attention, so just take a second.
Yeah, and you're right on the C B O services as well. And that was another one. When I got back, you all remember the journey we had on that one with the change of leadership that we had there, which I thought was, was good. And I'm excited about the new leadership. We've now been back for a year, year plus, year and, year and three quarters, year and a quarter, whatever. So anyway, I think we're going in the right direction there, but we've got to make sure we do everything we can to generate the resources that would be necessary.
Who else wants to be recognized? Councilmember McDuffie?
Mr. Chairman, you asked me, or you had, you had referenced me earlier with regard to the medical marijuana program that is being transferred from the Committee on Health to the Committee on Business and Economic Development, namely to ABRA. The difference was twofold, but only one remains. One difference was the social equity fund that we were seeking to establish in economic affairs to try to address some of the challenges with minorities being a part of this industry and, and having an opportunity to participate in the years of disparate enforcement in communities of color and the adverse impacts of marijuana law over the years. Fortunately, we, we don't have the money to fund the social equity fund and, and, and so that's going to get deleted. On the other hand, we did include a preference. So the Committee on Business and Economic Development recommends an amendment in our report that would establish a licensing preference for minority-owned businesses seeking in the supply side of the medical marijuana industry. And the objective would be to promote equitable ownership and employment opportunities in the marijuana industry, decrease the disparities in life outcomes for marginalized communities of color and address the disproportionate impacts of the war on drugs in those communities in the district. And just so folks have some background, of the eight businesses that have been licensed to operate since the beginning of the program in the district, I think it was in two thousand and eleven, seven, all majority owned by white shareholders. And even though there were some specific C V E recognition, I think Councilman Robert White had, had worked with us and had recommended that. But we all know that, that a business that is certified as, as a C V E doesn't mean that it is owned by a minority or a woman. And so the new language promotes social equity by ensuring that the business is minority-owned. So that, that would be the difference between what was recommended by the Committee on Health and, and what we have. and what we have, Committee on Business and Economic Development.
I'm hopeful to Councilmember McDuffie that in light of what you're trying to accomplish with your legislation, that we can work together to increase that percentage of people who are involved as cannabis, you know, purveyors in the city at this stage. I know we have, was it Anacostia Organic that's located on Martin and King Avenue? I know that's minority-owned. And I think they have, I think all of their employees too are people of color.
Yeah, I'm happy to work with you and anybody else who is interested in this topic. I know Councilmember Grasso had introduced a recreational, a bill that would regulate recreational marijuana. It's been referred to three committees, including mine and Councilman Ray Allen's and Chairman Mendelsohn's, notwithstanding the writer that was put in place on the Hill. You know, once we get through that, then obviously, I think that's another area that we should try to address some of these equity issues, and I'm happy to work with anybody who has an interest in that.
Let me, for other councilmembers who want to be recognized.
This is Treyon White.
Yes, Councilmember White.
Yeah, I just wanted to ask Councilmember Gray, what's his thoughts on the continuation of services at United Medical Center? I think they cut some of their nurses, one part of their operation with over 100 nurses last week. I want to know how that would affect the budget, and what's his thoughts on that?
Well, the United Medical Center will continue to operate until the new hospital is open. So it will have no impact on the budget. The mayor asked for essentially the same subsidy that's in the budget now, and we've sustained that. So the idea is to have United Medical Center, which is in your ward, of course, to be able to continue to operate fully until we're at the position to open the new hospital. And by the way, the urgent care centers, one of which, as I mentioned, is in Ward 8, the others in Ward 7, they will actually be open before the new hospital is. In fact, the last information I have, and we can verify this tomorrow, is that we could expect the first, those two urgent care centers, which there is not one ever been in either 7 or 8, but the urgent care centers will be open in 2021.
Do you have the address or locations for those?
I'm sorry, what'd you say, Councilmember White?
Do you have the location for those urgent care centers?
No, we don't at this stage. But I know, and if you have some thoughts on where it should be, which I'm sure you do, in Ward 8, we'd obviously love to have that. And Ward 7, we'll have some thoughts on it as well. We have a private entity that is committed to, they've already bought a building at Nanny Helen Burrows and Division Avenue, and they want to locate an urgent care center in that building. So that will be the third on the east end of the city, two of which will be in Ward 7, one of which will be in Ward 8. So whatever your thoughts are, of course, we want to have the benefit of it, Councilmember White.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. If there's nobody, no other councilmembers with regard to the Committee on Health, we'll move to the Committee on Human Services. I want to note it's 5:45, in case nobody was aware of that. Councilmember Nadeau?
Thank you, Chairman, for noting the time. Hoping that everybody at home and all of my colleagues are excited and enthusiastic for the presentation from the Committee on Human Services, and that for those who've been playing their own special council budget work session drinking game at home, that you're not too tipsy to follow along. But first, you know, I just want to mention that, not surprisingly, the goal this year for the Committee on Human Services is very similar to years past, which is to make homelessness rare, brief, and nonrecurring, and to make sure that we are adequately serving our most vulnerable people. So at its core, the committee's budget reflects continued dedication to ending chronic homelessness in the district, robust enhancements to our child welfare system, maintaining investments in disability services, and a commitment to making upstream investments in our residents, families, and communities so that they don't have to experience homelessness or enter the child welfare system. So I want to discuss some of our key recommendations. We cut relatively few FTEs from our agencies. All of our cuts were to unfilled positions that had been vacant, for the most part, for an extended period of time, or had no immediate plans to be filled. We made a responsible reduction to the CFSA budget for placements of youth in care. And even with that reduction, the investment in placements will increase by 3 million, the first increase in a number of years, despite the number of youth entering care going down. With this, in addition to a carryover of FY20 underspending, the committee was able to fund the following. Permanent supportive housing as a whole. The council invested in 50 additional units of permanent supportive housing for individuals. The committee was able to enhance the DHS budget by $321,600 in recurring funds to pay for the wraparound services for the 50 additional units of PSH. And the committee also transferred $520,000 recurring to the Committee on Housing and Neighborhood Revitalization to cover the rental costs of 22.662 units of PSH for individuals. The remaining rental costs for approximately 27.446 new slots of PSH for individuals came from the $630,822 of recurring intracommittee transfer in the Housing and Neighborhood Revitalization Committee. And combined with the mayor's investment in 96 new units of PSH for individuals, the district has invested in 146 additional units in the new FY21 budget. Chairman, I know you had some questions about the PSH transfer, and I can get to that during questions if you like. I will hold off on that for now. But you had been asking Councilmember Bonds a little bit about that, and I'm happy to go into more detail. We also allocated $310,000 in one-time funds to renew two prevention micro grants that CFSA has. And they were funded last year for the first time. They're aimed at supporting programs that, the first $150,000 to provide home visiting services to fathers that wish to gain knowledge and skills to improve their involvement and connection to their children, and $160,000 to provide services and supports to families with a focus on supporting mothers who are homeless, victims of domestic violence, and who are reuniting with their children after returning home following a period of incarceration. So we're thrilled to be able to restore those grants. And homeless outreach was a really big deal again for this committee, and we know for all of our members and across the council, the committee allocated $58,000 for homeless street outreach in FY21. To provide some context, last year, the council was able to find about $3.5 million to establish a DHS-administered homeless outreach program. Before FY20, the committee had relied on a federal grant, which funded teams of professionals who conducted street outreach to the Department of Behavioral Health, excuse me, to adults experiencing homelessness. The teams then connected these individuals to available housing and support services. But when that grant ended in April of 2019, it left a $3.8 million gap in services and no meaningful way to connect the homeless to available housing. Investing in housing for the homeless must be carefully balanced with outreach to the target population. And so both facets of the system must work in tandem for truly successful outcomes. Unfortunately, the mayor cut this program by about $2.1 million in her budget. But working together with our colleagues, we were able to almost completely restore it, although we will still be looking for more money, so stay tuned for that. So we were very fortunate this year to have the support of our colleagues. I want to talk about our transfers. We received $1.45 million in one-time funds from the Committee on Housing and Neighborhood Revitalization for homeless outreach. We received $100,000 in one-time funds from the Committee on Facilities and Procurement for the same, as well as $250,000 in recurring funds from the Committee on Government Ops for the same. Combined with the money that the committee found within our budget, we were able to restore about $1.6 million of the mayor's $2.1 million reduction. So fully restoring the program would mean another $450,000, which I believe is warranted, and I hope we will be able to find together at the Committee of the Whole so that we can continue to house the people who are outliving on the street and connect them with the services they need. Now, the next program that received a big cut that we were able to restore through the generosity of our colleagues was Project Reconnect. The committee received $1.2 million in one-time local funds from the Committee on Housing and Neighborhood Revitalization for Project Reconnect, the homeless prevention program for individual adults experiencing homelessness. This is a full restoration of the mayor's proposed reduction. We also received $200,000 in one-time local funds from the Committee on Housing and Neighborhood Revitalization to the Child and Family Services Agency to provide a support to a program that works to prevent families from unnecessarily entering the child welfare system through targeted legal interventions. Housing Committee also sent $150,000 in one-time local funds for the CFSA to support an existing program that provides services to youth between the ages of 11 and 24 years old that are not in CFSA's care and custody, but have been victims or are at risk of becoming victims of sex trafficking. Now, ERAP is the program that many of you mentioned in your presentations today as being important, and many of you stepped up to help fund it. There was $1.1 million cut by the mayor to the ERAP program, the Emergency Rental Assistance Program, which was in the errata letter listed as a typo. But, of course, that meant that we had to then go find the $1.1 million to restore it to prior to your funding levels. So we received $200,000 in one-time funds from the Committee on Facilities and Procurement, $250,000 in one-time funds from the Committee on Judiciary and Public Safety, $116,000 in one-time funds from the Committee on Health, $525,000 in one-time funds from the Committee on Housing and Neighborhood Revitalization, and $174,000 in recurring funds from the Committee on Recreation and Youth Affairs. In total, we received $1,091,000 in one-time funds and $174,000 in recurring funds. With these investments, the total budget for ERAP and FY21 is just over 8 million and constitutes a full restoration of the mayor's reduction plus an enhancement of $150,000. Now, that sounds pretty good, if you're not thinking about the full context. I want to, I think it really demonstrates, all of these transfers demonstrates that the full body recognizes the value of the program, but our work is not done. You know, we probably need another $12 million more. And I hope that a commitment from all colleagues will be there as we move forward as a full council at the Committee of the Whole, because we know that every year, ERAP runs out under normal circumstances. We're effectively only enhancing it by $150,000, which would run out under normal circumstances. And of course, this year, we do not have normal circumstances. So even when you look at the new programs created under Department of Housing and Community Development, there is still a great need for ERAP with local funds that we can control and that we can disperse, and we can ensure there are no limits on who receives it. So that's my pitch on ERAP. And I really do, once again, want to thank everybody who contributed. And for those who wanted to but couldn't, but I know you're going to help us at the Committee of the Whole to bring that political will forward to do it. There are a few key programs the committee was not able to fully fund, in addition to the amount that we believe ERAP should have. For the homeless outreach program, as I mentioned earlier, we need at least an additional $450,000 to fully restore it. I cannot emphasize enough how important it is to have the outreach program in place to complement the investments we're making in housing. That's how we connect people to the housing and the services that they need when they're experiencing homelessness. Let's see. One other note about ERAP. We had some discussion in our committee, which I'm not sure everyone was privy to, but I do want to mention for those who were paying attention, there is $23 million in ESG funds coming from the federal government to DHS. We assumed, we thought, in our conversations with the agency, that some of that money would go to ERAP. I think it's really important, we have found out in time, that none of that money is going to go to ERAP. It's going to go to housing, probably some emergency housing. And we really do need to keep that in mind. It does not seem like there are additional federal funding streams coming down for rental assistance beyond what we already know about. So we need to take that very seriously as we move forward in the budget. There is also still a shortfall in our housing for homeless residents, more than 1,300 units of PSH for individuals and 246 units of PSH for families. We may not be able to fill that whole gap this year, but we need to do better than what we've been able to do at the committee level, even by working together. So, you know, we have been making great progress. We put a record amount of housing for homeless individuals into the budget this calendar year. And we were really on track to using it all before COVID-19 hit. And I believe that we will be back on track, and we are getting back on track now to housing people. We think about all the people that are currently housed in hotels as a short-term measure. We need to be able to move them into housing. I can't imagine how we would feel as a city if we were moving people from hotel shelter to the streets once the public health crisis is over. So this is something we need to keep in mind as we work together at the Committee of the Whole. And finally, I am really appreciative that the mayor's proposed budget included an investment in increasing the pay of direct support professionals who provide supports to people with intellectual and developmental disabilities. It was not quite enough to address the workforce shortage. There remains a $2 million gap that we need to fill in order to increase the pay of DSPs employed by the Medicaid waivers. I want to thank everybody for their hard work on this budget, of course. Once again, Jonathan Antista, our committee's budget analyst. And I also want to take this opportunity to welcome our new colleague, Councilmember Brooke Pinto. We're very excited to have you on the council and sharing a border. So with that, Chairman, I will take any questions, and be happy to delve into that other issue that you raised before.
Thank you, Councilmember Nadeau. I do have some questions. Are there any subtitles that were in your committee?
No, sir, no subtitles.
For some reason, you were lucky. Why is it that you estimated ERAP, which I guess had $8 million this year, needs 20 million? And how did you get to that?
Conversations with those who are serving people that tend to utilize ERAP. I mean, I think it probably could be more, but that seemed like a number that we could work with.
Is the 8 million in this year's budget, is that less than we've had in past years?
So we were able to increase it by $150,000 from last year.
Yeah, no, that wasn't my question.
I'm sorry.
And 8 million is roughly what we have this year. Is that, have we ever had more than that in the past?
Not since my time on the council.
How much do we have in the budget for rapid rehousing?
I don't know that off the top of my head, but I can get it to you before we finish.
Okay, was your committee able to add to that? Or you left it the way the mayor proposed it, which I think had an increase?
We left it the way the mayor had proposed it, but I will mention this. Because we are extending people's stay in rapid rehousing throughout the health emergency, we are significantly over budget on our rapid rehousing funding. That is one of the reasons that the Emergency Solutions Grants are not available for ERAP, because we, as a city, have made a commitment not to evict anyone from rapid rehousing during the public health emergency. So you'll see, I think that the mayor will basically be able to make the program whole through the ESG, but they cannot weather any cuts if they're going to maintain the housing programs that we've asked them to operate.
ESG is part of the rapid rehousing?
ESG is the federal grant that came as part of the COVID package. ESG is the federal grant that came as part of the COVID package from the CARES Act.
Yeah.
Yeah. Rapid rehousing increased by about 10 million from the approved budget last year, but it's actually about a 15 or 20 million dollar reduction from the revised budget. And you're going to ask me why that is. And that is, I believe, because of the emergency that we've been extending everybody's stay.
I want to ask you about permanent supportive housing. I'm going to ask a little bit differently. When you and I talked several weeks ago, you said we needed 104 more units for individuals. Does that sound right?
It sounds low.
I said 104 units more than what was in the mayor's budget. That sounds low.
Yeah, I can go back and look at my notes on that, but not while I'm answering this question because I need to look at the notes that I have prepared for the rest of this.
Okay, well, but my question is, how much between, and what other committees gave you? How much were you able to add for individuals?
I see. Sorry, yes, I was, I probably said 104 because when I was making my asks, I was asking everybody to chip in a little bit. So, every member that I am on a committee with, for example, I said, could you put in between 90 and 200? Okay, so, the committee with, working together with the apartment, with the housing committee, we were able to increase by 50 units.
That's for individuals. You added 50 units. What about for families?
We didn't add anything for families.
And you're saying you think the need is about 204?
I think that there is a shortfall of about 246 for families. It's 1,300 for individuals.
If I understood what you just said, 1,300 more units for individuals, more? And 246 needed for families?
Yes, and that is just PSH.
At some point, there has been some lobbying for DC Central Kitchen. Would that come under your committee?
It could.
Yes, does it come under anybody else's committee?
No, I mean, they are one of the contractors that DHS uses. DHS doesn't have the type of capital budget that some other committees have. Ours has largely just been for shelter. Central Kitchen also works with DCPS. So, it really could go under any committee that has grant-making authority. DHS doesn't have that same type of grant-making authority.
Okay, so this tells me that no, none of the committees have done anything for DC Central Kitchen?
Not that I noticed, but I'm very supportive of it.
Mr. Chairman, we did something last year in the Labor Committee for DC Central Kitchen. Are you talking about in terms of their new, finding a new home?
I think so.
Yes, so we did in the Labor Committee. I think it was last year, could have been, actually, I think it was two years ago, a earmark of a million dollars.
We're not here to talk about two years ago.
Oh, they need a new home, Mr. Chairman.
Correct.
Yes.
All right, well then, let me ask about, on homeless outreach. So, Councilwoman Nadeau, if I heard you correctly, you're saying you think there's still about 450,000 needed?
That's right. That would fully restore the program. Even during the health emergency, the outreach teams have been working around the clock to serve people. I mean, kind of especially, right? Because we're trying to get people off the streets now, even into temporary housing, although we're putting as many people in permanent housing during the emergency as we possibly can. Since we do have the isolation sites, we can house people in hotels without them having demonstrated any symptoms of infection. We can do that to protect them and keep them healthy. So, we really have been fully utilizing these teams. They are grant-based, contract-based. So, there are about three operators throughout the city that run these programs as partners of DHS.
Okay, and when we met, you had also mentioned the program called Solid Foundations, which I think is youth homelessness.
That's right.
Were you able to do anything there?
We didn't need to do as much as we thought. The mayor negotiated some rate increases in the time between when you and I met and when we marked up our budget. And that was really the big ask that was for extended transitional housing.
So, I want to, I don't know how to ask this question. Federal dollars, are there federal dollars coming in, additional dollars coming in for ERAP or for homelessness that you have not accounted for?
No, so there's 23 million dollars coming in that's fully accounted for. It's primarily going to go to housing people. It'll go some to the prevention sites, some to the isolation sites, some to rapid rehousing extensions so people can stay in their housing during the health emergency. None of it will be available for ERAP because it will be fully spent.
Let me turn to other members. Thank you.
Thank you.
Questions from other members? I hope I didn't suck up all the air in the room.
We were so thorough, Chairman.
Yes. Your presentation and my detail.
Yes, we're a good team.
Any, this is last chance. I know that it's 6:08.
Everyone went to eat dinner, didn't they?
No, I don't think so. They're all actually behind the non-video image. All right, well then, thank you, Councilmember Nadeau.
Thank you, sir.
We'll move on to business and economic development. Councilmember McDuffie. Councilmember McDuffie.
I'm here, Mr. Chairman. Just getting materials together. Thank you for everybody's patience in sticking with this process at 6:10 PM. The Committee approved the mayor's proposed budget with the following changes to agencies under its jurisdiction. We reduced about just under 5 million dollars from Special Purpose Revenue Funds, 2.1 from DEMPAD, 596,500 FTEs from DISBEE, 245 from ABRA, and a host of other agencies. But the biggest portion of that came from the DISBEE sweep. We use that to fund the following priorities. 1.25 for the Equity Impact Assistance for Local Business Act of 2020. 1.1 million for the Deputy Mayor for Planning and Development Grant Making Authority. 870,000 for Equity Impact Enterprises Establishment. We also approved the Grant Making Authority for the Deputy Mayor for Entities Operating in Wards 5, 7, and 8. 100,000 to DEMPAD to expand New York Avenue to a priority area. And you can see on the slides there are other additional ones. We also transferred 3.8 million to other committees. The highlights of that are we allocated 720 from DSLBD's budget, their IT system. And we also transferred some to support the interim recreational space at the Carmel School and hoping that we can work with the executive to support the residents at Ivy City and family to give them some interim recreation use on the site of the old Carmel School. We accepted the following transfers. 956,000 from the Committee on Health, Transfer Medical Marijuana Program, which we discussed briefly earlier when Councilmember Gray presented his budget. We also, and Councilmember Gray mentioned this earlier, accepted 421,000 from the Committee on Health for the Skyland Tax Exemption. We accepted 376,000 from the Committee on Housing and Neighborhood Revitalization for the DCHA Public Housing Repairs through DEMPAD. The Committee on Recreation Youth Affairs sent us 250,000 for the Dream Gramps for Wards 7 and 8. 200,000 from the Committee on Transportation to create a new Chevy Chase Main Street Program at DSLBD. 131,000 from the Committee on Judiciary to create a new Eastern Market Clean Team at DSLBD. And we recommended changes to the mayor's BSA. Those include striking the Creative and Open Spaces Modernization Tax Rebate Amendment Act of 2020. We also recommended striking the Economic Opportunity and Creative Creativity Grants Authority Amendment Act of 2020. Although the slides say we are striking Games of Skill, we actually had an opportunity to review that working with our Council Budget Office and the OCFO, and we are not striking that. Turns out it would create a huge imbalance in the committee's budget because the mayor's recommended subtitle has some revenue-generating provisions in the Office of Lottery and Gaming. And although we have questions and plan to address these questions, we are trying to work with the executive as well as other stakeholders on the outstanding issues here. So, we are not actually going to be able to strike the Games of Skill subtitle. We wanted to leave it with ABRA. Unfortunately, there's still some outstanding issues, so we're not going to do that. We also add reported requirements to the Streetscape Business Development Relief Fund, which is recommended in the BSA subtitles, which include the Alex Morgan Bid. I'm not sure if this was mentioned earlier. I think it was mentioned earlier, but I can't recall which Councilmember mentioned it earlier. This has been a long day. But it addresses something, I think it was, no, it was Councilmember Che who mentioned it because it addresses some of the issues that bids have had with being able to maintain the properties that fall within their districts. And so, it expands their opportunity to work with the various DC government agencies to actually do that. And so, we definitely support that. The Equity Enterprise, I'm sorry, Equity Impact Enterprise Establishment, as I mentioned earlier, Business Recovery Tax Force Establishment, Rachel Equity Achieved Results Amendment Act, which everybody should be familiar with at this point, the Equity Impact Assistance for Local Business Act, Deputy Mayor for Planning and Development Grant Making Authority Act, which I referenced earlier. I'm sort of breezing through this just because I'd rather think at this point it might be more productive to answer any questions that people might have. So, I'm going to start right there, Mr. Chairman, and open it up for questions.
Thank you. And the hour is getting a little bit late. I, you, I'm going to try to talk with you today, later today, well, probably not later today, but in the next day or so to talk to you about some. My understanding is that you have added six subtitles that you requested the CFO. And while I'm not sure the subjects are controversial, they don't have any fiscal impact as far as I know. And they add about 30 pages to the Budget Support Act that, again, we do not have the capacity to deal with in the next two weeks, actually, next week.
Deputy, would you all knows, yeah, there are a number of them.
And I will talk to you about some of the others. I don't think I have any questions on numbers for you at this point. So, let me recognize other members. I think I saw Councilmember Bonds and Councilmember Che. Councilor Bonds?
Yes, thank you very much, Chairman, and thank you very much, Councilmember McDuffie, for this report. I just want to continue to voice my concern about the change through the mayor's presentation, mayor's budget, that moves any monies from the Housing Authority to DEMPAD. Now, I know that the new communities' money has always, well, has in the last three budget cycles been allocated to the, to DEMPAD. But it hasn't always been like that. And I just think that maybe you and I need to see if we can work it out because it just makes sense for the money to be where the work is being done. I have heard discussions about there needs to be checks and balances. Well, we could say that for all of our committees and for all of the funds, quite honestly. But, the truth be told, housing and the production of housing, the repairs are made through that entity. And so, I'm making an appeal to say that monies allocated for public housing should really be in the Public Housing Authority. And that's, that's my case. And so, I look forward to working with you on that issue as well as seeing if we can't get this so-called quasi-workforce moderate-income housing subtitle so that it works for the city. Our bottom line is that we want affordable housing. Yes, where we can get it, but we also want it in neighborhoods where it's dormant now. And to do that, we do have to put forth something. And we have done a lot of abatements in this since my tenure, seven years in this government. Amazingly, abatements to enterprises that are going to hire DC residents. And we still, we still don't have the flourishing economy that we said we were going to have. But we do it anyway, or we did it anyway. Prior to my tenure on the council, I recall going down to Arena State and being there for a ceremony when we gave Arena State's 10 million dollars because they were going to make sure that neighborhood kids, schoolkids, had opportunity to visit such a posh location. I understand that over the years, they received far more than that. Ford's Theater, I can just name a few. So, the abatement process has definitely been around. But I think, given the circumstances of the local economy, we really need to look anew at how we are doing abatements. I am not in the market for, and I don't think you are either, for 4 million dollar annual abatement. But maybe to get where we need to be so that we have an open field for moderate-to-workforce housing to be located in some of the more choice communities, which does include Ward 3, it does include Ward 6. It includes parts of Ward 5, as we well know. Then we may have to put forth a modest abatement, but it should be on those units that are being, that will yield this type of housing that we desire. So, I'm just looking forward to working with you on it. And I'm sure the Housing Committee wants to work with you too. So, thank you very much, sir.
No, I appreciate the concerns you raised, Councilmember. I think in the past, this is prologue. You know, our committees have worked together on these housing issues where there's overlap between the two. And I think that has been demonstrated in our work. that has been demonstrated in, in our work on subtitle two G, the tax abatement for affordable housing in high need areas. And I know the conversation that our staff is having and that we're having is going to continue. I'm happy to concerns with FAST and the way that it is, the funding is being structured for the Housing Authority. DEMPET has raised specific concerns, but I think they're legitimate questions as well. And so we can, we can continue to have that conversation.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
But I, but I also note, and I think when, when that subtitle about the tax abatement came down, our committees, I think immediately had similar concerns about the way that it was drafted. And so I think that speaks to both of our desire to try to craft a policy that is gonna, you know, address the real needs that we're experiencing in the District of Columbia. Whether we agree on one hundred percent of those things, I'm not sure. Hopefully, ultimately, we can get there with the executive support. But I know that we both had some concerns and, and, and there's been some compromise already on that.
Thank you, each of you. Councilmember Che and then Councilmember Todd.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Councilmember McDuffie, for, for your excellent report. I, I just have two things I want to mention. One has already been mentioned, but I want to lend my support for trying to find money for the DC Central Kitchen. They play such a central role in providing meals. And I think that they need some help over the number of years to, to move out of their really crumbling basement to a new facility. So I wanted to add my, my voice on that. But the second thing is I'm hoping maybe your committee, maybe the chairman, because we all know he prints money up in his office. He's not smiling, though. He's just definitely not smiling.
The money that we print in my office is monopoly money. Come up and play monopoly instead of deal with a long meeting.
As long as we could, you know, deposit it in the bank, I don't care what kind of money it is, but it's for the Save the Good Food Amendment Act. That legislation dates to 2017, and it gives, gives a tax credit for food donations for businesses and individuals. I'm happy to leave off the individuals for the funding at this time, but it's an important bill at this moment because it would give these tax deductions to, to businesses that would make these food donations a tax credits, not deductions, credits to businesses like restaurants and, and food stores and so on. And if we did eliminate the part for individuals and just did the businesses, which could be a great help to them, but also we would get this food available, it would be one and a half million dollars a year. And so if there's some way we could tweak the budget for that purpose, I think it would be a, a good thing. So that's really all I have. And so I thank you both.
I'm afraid that I woke up after you said you wanted me to come up with one and a half million dollars. That's one and a half, what?
How about, how about if I repeat my remarks at length, maybe over an hour? Would that, would that be helpful?
No, just very briefly. This would be a tax abatement?
No, it would be a tax credit to businesses, restaurants, food stores, for good food. Instead of throwing it out, they could donate it. It would help people who are in need of food, but it would also help the businesses themselves, particularly the restaurants, to be able to get this tax credit. So I think it would be really worthwhile. It would fit in line with some of the things that you've been trying to do. And so maybe we could figure out a way to, to get a million and a half dollars. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I have Councilmember Todd, and then I think there were some other hands, maybe?
Thank you, Chairman, and thank you, Councilmember McDuffie, for your work on your committee's report. I do have one concern, which I think I brought to your, and that's around the Walter Reed Redevelopment Fund and the committee's sweeping of roughly five hundred thousand dollars. I am concerned about the use or the taking of those funds. In 2016, the council unanimously approved the goal of the fund, which is to transfer daily maintenance and operating obligations, risk and cost from the district to the development team. The development team has incurred about one point seven million dollars without reimbursement from this fund thus far. And they are very concerned about their ability to recoup those costs. I do, you know, want to make sure that we hold up our end of the bargain. You know, Walter Reed is a redevelopment project, not only for Ward Four, but for the entire city. So I'm hopeful, Councilmember McDuffie, that we can work together and perhaps with you, Mr. Chairman, to restore that four hundred and eighty five thousand dollars. You know, the, the fund should help keep the, say, the site secure. Right now, probably less than twenty five percent of the site is being used. I think there are about a hundred and sixty residents. So aside from the site, that active construction is taking place, it's dormant. And so we want to make sure that we can keep it monitored twenty-four seven. So Councilman McDuffie and Chairman Mendelson, I hope to work with you both to address those concerns between now and the vote.
And yeah, I, I appreciate you raising that concern with me prior to today's meeting, Councilmember Todd. And as you pointed out, we did sweep approximately four hundred eighty five thousand eight hundred eighty seven dollars from the fund. It does leave, I think, around one point two, one million two hundred ninety one thousand five hundred forty eight dollars still available in the fund. And those funds were certified by the Budget Office for, for use. And I obviously don't want to do anything that's gonna adversely impact the development. I mean, I think that's the key to raising that concern. We, we, it was our understanding that, that, that it would not adversely impact development. There has been a couple, I think, two applications for reimbursement. One was paid. I think there was an application in 2018 and, and, and there had been a stretch before the second application was made. I think the second application was made this month. So to the extent there are concerns about how this might impact the development, then obviously we'll try to work to address that. Obviously, that wasn't the intent of the committee to do that. And, but I'm, I'm not certain that this would impact adversely the development either. I know the developers raised some concerns, but I, I think that there's an application pending with DEMPET. They're reviewing it. And there's also, on average, about a little over a million dollars that comes into the fund each year. And the full amount has not come into the fund for this year. Obviously, there's been a pandemic. I don't know if that's gonna affect it at all, but generally, there's about a million dollars that comes into that fund. There was one point one in 2018, a million sixty seven thousand in 2019, and so far this year, only four hundred and fourteen thousand. So I think it's still safe to assume that there should have been some more coming into it. But I, I know your concern and obviously don't want to adversely impact the project.
Well, I appreciate that, Councilmember, and look forward to talking further to make sure that, that things can move forward. So thank you for your indulgence.
Was there anything else, Councilmember Todd?
No, nothing further, Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Pinto.
Hi, Councilmember McDuffie. Could you spend a minute speaking about any additional grant money for DSLBD for our small businesses? What the process was there?
Additional grant money for DSLBD and our small businesses. I don't know that I sort of highlighted it in that way. Give me one second, though. Yeah, you know, rather than try to go through the specific line items for DSLBD, is there a specific program that you're referring? Is it the Great Streets program? Is it the Main Streets program? Is there anything specifically that you're, you're wanting to know about? Or can I just maybe think about how we can address the question more broadly? Is that? There was.
I was most curious about, kind of due to the pandemic, an extension or an increase of additional grant money? And if there was going to be corresponding staffing needs at DSLBD to account for that? But if you're saying it's, it's easier to go line by line for each program, then we can speak offline about it.
I'm trying to see if my, my staff is responding to. Yeah, I'm not getting any text messages. I'd rather just probably follow up with you specifically. I know that Councilmember Trayon White, he sent us some of his budget to address the concern with funding some of the dream grants in Ward Seven and Eight. I know that there have been some things that we had done during the pandemic, obviously with our COVID-related emergencies, where we gave the mayor the authority to issue the micro grants that they issued, which were amounted to more than thirty million dollars and went to thousands of businesses across the District of Columbia, specifically in this budget. There is authority to, for DEMPET to continue to do some of the grant making, what's that, five, seven, eight, as I mentioned. But I'm also, I'm looking at how we address some of the issues around equity and have included a provision for DEMPET for grant making authority to a DC charter bank with the hopes of addressing some of the specific issues around minority businesses, women-owned businesses, and constituencies that have not been well-served by traditional larger banks and small businesses that are owned by minorities, in particular black business owners, who have not had as much success in some of their federal relief programs, like the Paycheck Protection Program loans and the like. So I am happy to sort of perhaps give you a more comprehensive answer to, to what the, the budget is doing specifically. But I also will tell you, and I think this is an appropriate time to, to share, regardless of, of what we were able to do thus far with the micro-business grants, with the micro-grants, I, I think that there are a number of businesses that are still suffering in the District of Columbia, both large and small. And we have to do more. And I, I'm currently, you know, working on legislation to try to do more to address the industries that have been hardest hit. You know, industries like our restaurants. I keep seeing article after article about restaurant closures. I think I saw something today about one of Jose Andres's restaurants in Georgetown that they set to close. And there have been a number of restaurants across the District of Columbia that continue to close. Industries like our hotel industry, sports, entertainment, nightlife industries, the retail establishments that, you know, had closed down temporarily, some have closed down permanently, and they really are still looking to the District of Columbia for help. And I think we need to help them. I know the mayor has allocated some of the federal CARES Act funding. It's still left for expenditure, and I'm hoping to be able to work with the mayor and the chairman and, and anybody else in the council. I know Councilmember Charles Allen has expressed an interest in, in working with us to try to figure out how we address some of the issues around business interruption and the ability of these businesses to rehire their workers, who, as Councilmember Severn pointed out, after really soon won't have that additional six hundred dollars of unemployment that they're currently getting under the CARES Act. And so I think we've got a lot more work to do, Councilmember Pinto. And, and I am more than happy to, to sit down with you to talk about some of the things we're trying to do on the budget, but also perhaps some of the things that we need to do, you know, before we pass the budget, or at least while we're considering how we implement the budget in 2021, what we need to do now to address some of the existing issues that remain.
Thank you. And certainly, there's so many wonderful efforts afoot to try to help our small businesses recover. But just to clarify, in this year's budget, there's not additional specific grant money geared to target small businesses that were struggling due to COVID past what's already been given.
I would say that, I don't know that the Mayor's budget sent down any additional funding specifically related to COVID-19, if that's what you're asking. I know that we have tried to address some, some specific issues through some enhancements for additional programs like the Equitable Assistance for Local Business Act that is included in the budget. And it would establish the Equity Impact Fund to provide investments to eligible businesses that experience barriers to accessing capital, for example. We included, I'm trying to find it in my notes, where this is. Okay, let me, let me tell you about the we also would include money, seven hundred fifty thousand dollars for DEMPET to do a disparity study. You know, the committee tried to fund the disparity study a couple of years ago, and unfortunately, what we got back was a recommendation for disparity framework. But essentially, they said that the city wasn't even collecting the right data to be able to do a disparity study. And the idea was behind that was to do a disparity study via the factual predicate to be able to do a minority and women business enterprise program in the District of Columbia. So we are including the seven hundred fifty thousand dollars for that specifically. And then we are also including, I'm just having trouble finding this in all my various notes. I wish this would have been clear in the document, but I want to tell you about a specific program that I'm having trouble finding. Hold on one second.
All right. And don't worry about it, too. It's been a long day. I can follow up with you afterwards.
Okay, that's fine. I appreciate it. All right, I'll follow up with you on that, though, specifically.
Thanks so much.
Questions from other members? If there are no questions from other members, we will turn to the committee as a whole. We'll see how long I can take on this because I know that I am between you and dinner. Or that we've already been meeting for eight hours and we could meet for another couple. Let me see, the, unlike any of the other committees, the budget for the, the recommendations by the committee of the whole were explained to all of the members at our meeting, our markup on Thursday. So I'm gonna try to go through this pretty quickly. The committee, we call it affectionately the Little Committee because to distinguish it from next week's meeting. The Little Committee did not make a lot of changes to the agencies under its purview. There were some changes at the auditor's office, at the recommendation of the auditor. There were some increases of small amounts reflecting money that was sent to the committee of the whole, such as from Transportation and the Environment to support a Chevy Chase planning study by the Office of Planning, or money from the Committee on Business and Economic Development to support an equity, council equity assessment program, which is not assessing the equity of the council, but rather assessing the equity of bills that we are considering, and money that we accepted from two committees to help support the work of the Police Reform Commission. So I think most of the reportable work of the committee here is what we did with the BSA subtitles. And so we agreed with the committee on, I believe it was Government Operations, maybe I'm wrong, to strike Facility Operations Reprogramming Amendment Act. I can't remember which committee that was. We agreed with them. It might have been, I'm sorry, Committee on Facilities and Procurement. We agreed as well with the Committee on Facilities and Procurement to strike the Streamline Contract Review and Procurement Efficiency Reform Amendment subtitle that the mayor proposed, we struck the Targeted Historic Preservation Assistance Amendment Act because we, there's separate legislation pending, and we can deal with that through freestanding legislation. In fact, committee of the whole is having a hearing, I believe, on July eighth. We agreed with the Committee on Judiciary and Public Safety to strike the rehiring of retired police officers by the Department of General Services and Department of Parks and Recreation. We agreed generally with the Committee on Education about the Education Facility Colocation subtitle. Although there's some slight changes in differences. although there's some slight changes in differences in wording, which I have to get worked out. We recommended striking the mayor's proposed Child Development Facilities and Pre-K Reports Amendment Act, because that would have changed and reduced reporting requirements. And we we generally struck a subtitle concerning DCR, in DCR, concerning a special account SPR Fund. However, the committee as a whole recommended retaining a provision related to the Green Building Fund. So in that sense, we agreed with the Command Transportation and the Environment. We recommended, I think it's five new subtitles, to establish an Archives Advocacy Group to advise the council with regard to this capital improvement project that keeps getting kicked down the road. We recommend a subtitle that will help the DC auditor to retain unspent year-end funds so that the auditor's office can do multi-year contracts. We recommend, again, a subtitle regarding the UDC matching program. We've done that every year because there are dollars in the budget, and this describes how those dollars become available to UDC. We recommend a subtitle concerning, it's called Public Charter School Funding Stabilization Amendment Act. And there was some discussion about this at the markup last week, and we will look at the language, probably limiting this or more narrowly tailoring it to adult education charter schools. And then there's a subtitle concerning events DC funding for GoGo grant making. And that is the work of the Little Committee as a whole. Are there questions from members? I have no questions for myself. Are there questions from members? Give me just a moment. Sorry, I'm getting some input. Other questions from any members? I'm not seeing, of course, I only have a few numbers in front of me. I do not see any raised hands. Okay, well, then that's going to conclude the committee presentations. Sometimes when we end these meetings around the these work sessions around 3:00 in the afternoon, oh, we spend some time talking about council-wide priorities. I don't know if members have much patience for that now. I would suggest that folks reach out to me if they want to discuss council-wide priorities. With that, let me ask if there are any other comments from members. I'm trying to give everybody a chance.
What's the process from here in the coronavirus world, Mr. Chairman? We should just reach out to you individually?
Uh, yeah. The even even though it looks like everything is pretty orderly or everything is falling into place, there's actually quite a bit of intense work that the Budget Office needs to do over the next several days. Remember, we have a holiday between here and the markup on July 7. The goal is to circulate the report on July 6. Yes, July 6, Monday, the 6th. And what we will be voting on, let me remind everybody, is we'll be voting on first reading on both the Local Budget Act and the Budget Support Act. We will not be voting on the other measures, which are the Federal Request Act and the supplemental. But two weeks later, we will be voting on the supplemental and the Federal Request Act and second reading on the budget, Local Budget Act. The BSA, I keep saying that the BSA is far more complicated. That will be July 28, so there'll be three weeks between first and second reading there. Does that answer your question, Councilmember Silverman?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Any other comments or questions from members? Councilmember Nadeau?
Thanks, Chairman. Yeah, so are we not, we're not going to be able to do the full discussion at this point, or?
I'm, I I can try to find a third wind if other people want to.
Well, maybe I'll just, if I could just say a couple of things, because I was sort of holding back from each committee presentation in order to save them for the end. So maybe I can just scoop up a little time here. But I know you've been following the discussion around the Housing Production Trust Fund. We had a really great conversation in the Housing Committee about the fact that it's essentially all spent. The money's all obligated, and there's a great need to increase the amount. But it it seems as though we need to do something different. And I'm curious if you've been at all a part of the conversations about creating a local Lytech program, or rather getting them to implement the one that we asked them to pilot a few years back, which would allow us to leverage additional dollars rather than only putting in local funds?
I have been looking at that, and as I think you know, I've been several proposals for how to try to leverage more dollars.
Yeah.
And so I think the best I can say at the moment is it's under consideration.
Okay, thanks for that.
A challenge with the DC Lytech approach, I say DC because there's a federal Lytech. The challenge with the DC Lytech is, as you noted, a few years ago, the council adopted such a program, and the executive promptly ignored it, or at least my understanding.
Right.
The the goal here is to not come up with a solution that will be ignored.
Yeah, and and perhaps, given the the stresses of the time, it wouldn't be ignored. I don't know. But, you know, it seems like we we have to find a way to leverage more funds. And I know that the the committee chair was able to put more funding into the Preservation Fund. That's a leveraged fund, but we need more funding there, too, as well. I know Councilmember Silverman's been very concerned about that as well. I want to also just echo all of the comments of my colleagues who talked about the need for funding repairs and maintenance in public housing. I think the number needs to be closer to $60 million. I want to remind us that we all have been working together to eliminate the requirements of twice-in-person renewal of the Alliance Public Health Benefit. It's a public health crisis. We need to find the almost $17 million to fund the legislation that we passed unanimously on that. And then there's two other, there's there's a couple of other things that I don't think anybody has mentioned today that I just want to make sure we get on the record. We did talk a lot today about early childhood education. We did talk about the need to get parents back in the workforce. The under-three coalition estimates that we need, I believe, a $20 million fund to offset the costs of early childcare providers who are now implementing additional requirements due to the public health emergency or who may have not been made whole by any of the grant programs. The survey they did of their members, it seemed to indicate that many of them have not been made whole by PPP or by the DEMPED grants. And then finally, just back to our immigrant population, there have been calls for a $30 million fund for financial relief for excluded workers, not just immigrants, but workers who are excluded from the unemployment benefits. And then the Immigrant Justice Legal Services Grant Program, which I was so pleased that we maintained the mayor's $2.5 million enhancement. The estimated need is actually $5 million, so another $2.5 million in this fiscal year. So just to reiterate, $30 million for excluded workers, additional $2.5 for the immigrant justice legal services, and $20 million for the early childhood education grants. And that was all I had, but I was saving them to the end, so I didn't want to miss out, miss my chance. So thank you.
Thank you. Other comments from members? This is sort of like Last Chance, and then we can all go to dinner. I shouldn't put it that way. If there are no other comments, you all know how to work with the Budget Office with regard to your particular committees and any questions you have, and reach out to me if there's anything. And I'm sure I'll be in touch with most, if not all, of you over the next few days.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. McDuffie.
What did you say? You know, with Councilmember Nadeau mentioning about the local Lytech, I actually introduced that bill six years ago, and the council passed it. There were some concerns that have been raised by the executive in terms of representation, interest in the credits, in the local credits. And so I I would be happy to to sort of get some background to whomever is interested in that about some of the challenges, at least as articulated by the executive when we pushed them to try to implement it a couple of years ago.
Thank you. With that, you you've got the last word. We stand adjourned, and we will be in touch. Be safe, everybody, and thanks.